Good afternoon. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. It's just after 1:30. We're again in the Sierra Room in Carson City at the community center. We're going to take up item number 24A. This is a possible action to appoint a member to the Airport Authority for the manufacture position. I have a disclosure to make, and I'm going to be making that disclosure and turning the gavel over to the Mayor Pro Tem Supervisor Ebaud. My disclosure is that my law partner is counsel to the Airport Authority. Since the Airport Authority appoints the counsel, it's inappropriate for me to participate in the discussion or appointment of the members of the Airport Authority. Therefore, I will, I'm disclosing, and I will recuse myself and turn the gavel over to Karen. I'm going to leave.
So I am going to open this 24A to appoint one member for the Airport Authority in the manufacture position to fill a partial term that will expire October of 2017. I think we have one other disclosure.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose conflicts of interest. Item 24A affects my commitment in a private capacity to the interests of William Miles, who's an applicant. I have a substantial and continuous business relationship with Bill Miles as I represent him in his personal real estate transactions. Therefore, a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected by this relationship, and because this is a disqualifying conflict of interest, I will recuse myself in this matter.
Thank you. And before we get started, City Manager, I'm going to ask for the DA to weigh in on the criteria for appointment, specifically a couple of items, one of which is contract for services. The other is the three-mile radius issue that is a requirement by the Airport Authority, so.
Okay. With regard to the three-mile radius, I know that the requirement is that the individual be within the three-mile radius. That does not mean that they have to reside in the three-mile radius. That just means that they have to be within, whether their business is in that area, whether their business address is in that area, or their manufacturing business is in that area. So it doesn't specify whether or not they have to reside, or that their manufacturing business has to be within. And hopefully that answers that question. As far as whether or not they are within the three-mile radius, I can't speak to that because somebody would have, that's not within my purview. Somebody would have to verify the distance. With regard to the other question about the contracting issue?
Yes. Excuse me. Contract for services, persons that have a contract for services and/or goods with the city are not eligible for appointment by city boards, committees, and commissions unless the intent of the committee so requires it, or is otherwise provided by law. I need you to define that.
Okay. And I'll focus on otherwise provided by law. There is a statute on point with in the ethics and government law, and I'll cite that for the record. That's NRS 281A. I believe it's 430. And that specifically speaks to public officials, which I believe that the members of the authority are considered public officers as defined in the statute of the NRS 281A. And it speaks specifically of those members having contracts that are controlled by the board that they sit on. So they cannot contract with the board that they sit on, or the commission that they sit on, but they can contract with other agencies, or boards, or commissions, or what have you. And the intent behind that is that in smaller counties or cities, you know, you have limited resources with regard to individuals that are willing to volunteer on a board or on a commission. And so you would have those conflicts. So this pretty much remedies that situation so that you can have individuals that are willing to serve on boards and commissions, because they wouldn't have to pick whether they're going to sit on a board, or whether they're going to conduct business.
Is that pointing to clarification for the board?
Further clarification.
All right.
So who will determine the three-mile radius? If it's in, if it's in governing nature or the body of a document that says three-mile radius, who's the determining factor to say they're within the three-mile radius?
You're the appointing authority, so I would say that that responsibly rests with the board.
So I have to go out and measure and meter it?
Well, you could, and this is just a suggestion, but you could determine that by using Google Maps, or if there's testimony from the public with regard to that. If somebody has already researched that, if the individual that's applying for it has already researched that, those are just, you know, suggestions. But I, that's what I would offer.
I just, I think that's a illogical approach, was my opinion, that it's going to rely on every board member up here to Google the three-mile radius, or look at other documents to make sure they're a manufacturer, they have a license within the community, or all the other stipulations, which is in the Board of Practices and Policies, that it's up to us individually to go out and enforce that. I just think that's illogical for that nature, I guess, to place that burden on me. I don't accept that burden.
Adriana, to address Jim's point, could I call on a member of the public to just speak to the radius distance?
You could open it for public comment.
All right. I'd like to open it for public comment.
This is Steve Takeus, the counsel for the Airport Authority. I was hoping I could just watch this event. But the, we did check, at least I did check, and both applicants have a business license in Carson City. As to the three-mile radius, I used maptools.com, freemaptools.com to check the distances. I did it again this morning, just to make sure I had the right information, because earlier I actually had just taken other people's words for it. And with respect to Mr. Miles, his house is within 2.9 miles of the airport's boundary, and his business address shown on his business license, which is the post office that's on Highway 50, which is the official address for his business, apparently, is well within, it's a stone's throw from the airport, really. It's less than a mile. With respect to Mr. Murdoch, I just plugged his address, and there's only one address there, the address on his application, which is also the address on his business license, and that appears to be his home address, which is near Coons Lane, southern part of Carson City. And that came, that came in at 3.7 miles. So I guess I'm just testifying that I use the map tools, and that's the numbers I came up with. I do want to say, though, I'm testifying here, I'm impartial on this matter. You know, my role is Airport Counsel, and so I really shouldn't be here trying to make a recommendation one way or the other. So I'm only offering that as factual information.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. I guess we'll get started if that...
Still have more discussion. What we have is now a PO box. We'll recognize, we're recognizing PO boxes as an address for a business or manufacturer, as being within the three-mile radius. Is that correct? That's what I'm hearing.
Are you asking whether you can interpret whether that fits within the criteria?
Correct.
And that, that would be up to you. You have discretion to determine whether or not the PO box or the home address is within the three-mile radius.
So can I ask just procedurally something different, then? It appears that both applications have issues of conflict, of whether or not they could qualify to serve. Is there any issue with us not appointing either body and reopening the position? Or do we have that authority within this to not appoint either candidate?
I believe the agenda item gives you that opportunity to either vote for it or not vote for it.
Well, I guess at this point, I might need to ask what the pleasure of the board is before I move to interviews.
I feel we should reopen the position, and it should be clear to any candidate that's applying what the rules are to serve. And that, I agree with Jim, that they bring the verification with them on this particular application, that they're within the three-mile rule. I agree with, with Jim, that they should certify that they meet the condition, not, not us, so.
Well, I've been asking this question since last week, and I mean, I know I'm getting the answers today. I'm not satisfied with the answers, and I think this should go back and reopen and have, we should be given documents to feel secure that what we're doing in appointing those persons meet the criteria. I don't think it's up to me to go and investigate people, and I don't really want to do that. So I prefer this come back to the board.
City Manager?
Well, I mean, obviously, you have the discretion to send it back. Certainly, it sounded to me like we had testimony that said at least one of the applicants has his home residence within the three-mile limit.
That's right. There's no conflict in that respect.
However, the conflict potentially is in the fact that our boards and commission policy indicates that if you have a contract for services and/or goods with the city, you're not eligible for appointment to the city board. And while I understand what she spoke to, but the spirit of this boards, and I believe the spirit of the boards and commissions, was to indicate that if you had a city contract, you couldn't serve. And that the intent of the committee so requires is if there was a specific statute that they had to serve, like manufacturing, three, three-mile radius, that there was some conditions in there. And so I just feel we need to, as I stated earlier, potentially revisit the boards and commission policy, and then appoint the appropriate candidate based on that.
And I agree with that. I've been talking about this document for months, that we need to revisit this. We had no progress on this, and this is the reason we should have done it when I first asked for it. So again, I, right now personally, I abstain from voting on this until it comes back to the board. You can do as you please.
First of all, if I could touch on the abstention, in order to abstain, you actually have to have a conflict of interest that's recognized by the ethics and government law. And I'm just, just, just to keep the, the record clean. And with the, with regard to the agenda item, I just reread the agenda item. And actually, in order to be compliant with that agenda item, you can do one of two things. Number one, you could either vote, because the, the agenda item says to appoint one member to the Airport Authority manufacturer position to fill a partial term that will expire October 2017. So you could actually vote. Whether that's up or down, that's up to you, but vote on the item, number one. Or number two, as Chair Pro Tem, you could actually table this for another meeting.
Well, could we make a motion to table it? We don't have to have the Mayor Pro Tem table it.
You don't even have to, she has authority to just table it. She doesn't even have to be a motion. And that actually, you wouldn't be able to have a motion, because it's not agendaized.
Well, I think then, in the interest of the fact that there's only three of us on this board, and the direction of the board is clear, I think we need to table this and put it out for noticing again. Thank you. And I apologize to the candidates. It's not your fault. Thank you for applying.
At least we didn't make you do a public interview.
You want to give it back? Yeah, man, you're going to throw it at me. Okay. We're going to take up 24B. This is the appointment of two members of the Carson City Planning Commission, one for a partial term that expires in 2017, and the other to fill a partial term that expires in 2018. I got the city manager's light on. You want to take us where we are on this?
I do. Mr. Mayor, for the record, I would like to indicate that Mr. Salerno is unable to be here in person due to a family emergency. He has requested that we do a phone interview. We have typically done that, so I assume it'll be the pleasure of the board to do so, and we have him ready for that. Mr., I'm sorry.
That's very good.
Okay. Mr. Aaron Sims has withdrawn his nomination. He did that yesterday afternoon. So with that, I'm going to take all the, if there is anyone in the room, I'm going to take them outside, and then I will bring them back in, in the sequence that they're listing the agenda. Go ahead, Karen. Yeah. Get him on the phone, please.
And we have an additional filing that came in last night as well, right?
Yes, we did. And I think you have the late material that was submitted last night. If you remember, we initially had just one vacancy on the planning commission. A second one came up. So I re-noticed that we had that additional vacancy, and I held it open until the last possible moment last evening. We did get one more nomination, and I think you have that marked as late material in front of you.
Very good. All right. Let's start.
Who's calling?
Yep. Nick Morano, I'm the city manager here.
Yes, Nick. How are you?
I'm very good. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to keep you, keep you up on speaker here, and I'm going to turn this over to the mayor, Bob Kroll. He will run the interview process, and then at the end, I'll have a couple of comments for you before we hang up, okay?
Okay. I'm, I'm in a restaurant right now, so let's see. Let me...
We can call you back. Call him back.
How about if I come back to you in about 20 minutes?
Okay. No, I'll be okay. I'll be okay. I'm, I'm okay now. Do you hear me, Nick?
Yep, I hear you fine.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Kroll.
Hi, Mr. Salerno. Mr. Salerno, this is Bob Kroll, I'm the mayor in Carson City. How are you today? How are you today?
Hi, this is Mayor Kroll.
Yes. How are you?
Okay, Dan. Fine. I'm fine. Dan Salerno.
As you know, or may not, may know, what we do here is we have, each of us gets a chance to ask a couple questions, more if we need to, but we each try to ask the same questions of each applicant, so nobody gets an unfair advantage about knowing the questions, or something of that nature. And I usually, and the other applicants are out of the room right now. And one, we'd like to thank you for applying, and thank you for offering to serve your city. I usually start the questioning off, if you can hear me okay, let me just say, start the questioning off by saying, one, you know, give us a little bit of your idea, your background, why you want to do this, and then my, that's to get you kind of started. And then my question to you is, do you have a vision for where you think Carson City ought to go in the short, near, and far term, in terms of its planning?
Would you repeat the question again?
Sure. I'm sorry. How about now? Can you hear me? That's a terrible thing to say. I always hear that. Can you hear me now? I hate that, man. All right. All right. I'll try it again. I don't know where you, what, what you heard or not, but here's the question. The question is, one, give us a little background on who you are, why you want to do this. And then my question to you, a substantive question to you, is what's your vision for the planning of Carson City in the short term, medium term, and far term? What's your, what are your, what are your thoughts on where Carson City ought to go?
Well, if I understood right, what's my vision for the city, if that's correct?
Correct.
Yes. I think that it's a wonderful city as it is, and I think we're about ready to grow rather dramatically. And I think that we really need to be very careful about what we do with this new expansion, and to make it be certain that it's in character with our city. I think that most of us like it the way that it is. We do not want it to look anything like Los Angeles, or many other cities that I could point to. I know we're nowhere here that much, you know, we're not about to be. But I think that it's something that we have to be very careful with, and be sure that it's in keeping whatever expansion we do with the population, with the people that live there, and, and with the general character of our city.
I don't know if you heard that. Okay, okay, I said. I'm sorry. Who wants to go next? Wait, Karen first, then you. She's been in the soup here, so.
Hi, Daniel. Part of your duties on the planning commission would be the issuance or not of special use permits, variances, changes of land use, master plan amendments. What in your background will help you make informed decisions, and how you, how will you deal with contentious emotional issues?
Well, I couldn't hear everything that you said, but I think that you are asking about how we proceed with, with the special use permits and that, that sort of thing. And I think that the answer to that is very carefully taking into consideration the desires of the citizens, and to listen very carefully to them, and most appropriately to our expert, who happens to be the planning department, the planning director, and use just really good common sense with every decision we make.
And what in your background helps inform your decisions?
Well, you know, with my background, I've been an architect for my entire life practically, ever since I was 30 years old. And I have been the owner of an architectural planning firm in San Diego for 30 years. I started the firm, and it grew to approximately 65 people that were under my supervision. And we did planning. For instance, we did the Lawrence Weld facility in Escondido, if you're familiar with that. We did the master plan for that. We did many, many other projects, both architectural and also planning in nature. And we even had a small planning division within, within our firm, because we were doing that kind of work. So I think I have a lot of background in growth. It was in San Diego that where our firm was, and still is, although I'm no longer a member of the firm, I still use my name. I simply retired from it, because I didn't want the liability that comes along with ownership of such a firm.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Can you hear me, Daniel?
Yes. Who is it?
This is Supervisor, Supervisor Bonkowski.
Okay.
I have a scenario for you. A builder submits a project that meets all city requirements. At the commission meeting, many of the neighbors protest the project because it blocks their view, or they just don't like the use. How would you make your decision, and what would it be?
In that situation, I think the decision has to be very careful. We have to keep the city foremost in mind, how, what would be best for the city. However, the needs of the community, and whatever they would request or desire, certainly has to be taken very much into consideration. So I think we just have to be very careful in making that kind of decision. Washington County, I was on the planning commission there for 10 years in Nevada, and that was always one of the most difficult things. There's always somebody that, that feels differently about a project. And we have to take those thoughts into mind very carefully, but foremost, what's best for the city.
So what would your decision be?
Oh, the decision would be regarding whether the, I guess maybe I missed your question. Would you ask the question once again?
Yes. A builder submits a project that meets all city requirements, all requirements.
Okay.
But, but at the planning commission meeting, the neighbors show up, and they protest the project because they don't like the use, or the project would block their view. How would you decide that?
Well, we can't just simply base it on one side or the other. I believe that my decision would be what is best for the city, and we have to take every... And we have to take every, everyone's feelings into consideration in the process. But simply because somebody is against a project that is good for the city, certainly would not be a good reason to deny it.
Thank you.
This is Lori Bagwell, I'm gonna go for the simple one, since it wasn't there. Why do you want this position?
Would you repeat the question again? I have a hearing, and this device is not the best that I have.
Why do you want the position?
I missed it again, I'm sorry.
Daniel, the question is, why do you want the position?
Oh, why do I want the position? Well, I'd like to contribute to the community that I'm involved with now. I think that, you know, my background, my experience, is something that I can contribute to the city. There's no other reason, I do not want a promotion from this to anything else. I'm simply interested in planning. So it's something, I have the time to do it because I'm not employed doing anything else other than I'm a volunteer sheriff for the city in Carson City. I do that, and I can do both. I can continue to do my volunteering as a sheriff, and also do the planning. And one of the reasons, of course, one of the most important things that I do is I want to look at the property physically before I make a decision, on every project. I found out in the past that that's most important, to be actually visually knowledgeable about the project before we start deliberating and making decisions. I can probably answer more than the question asked for it, but I apologize if I have.
Good afternoon, this is Jim Shirk. My question is, how will you look to improve or change the commission's role in Carson City, if you have a vision?
How would I look to change?
Improve or change, yes.
Yeah. Well, I think that we have to look to the professionals on the outside, who would be proposing any change. And then we have citizens, because we are just citizens, we're not on the board, we are not professional designer planners. We have to take into consideration what the people of Carson City want, and what is best for the city. I just see that Carson City is about to grow. I think it's going to grow tremendously. And I just want to be certain that we go in the right direction.
Thank you.
Mr. Solerno, this is the mayor. That completes the questions. Is there anything you want to add that may have come to your mind from these questions?
No, no.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, I just certainly want to, I would like to participate in the planning, as a planning commissioner, if that's the desire of the supervisors. And I would feel it would be an honor to serve the city in that capacity. It's one area where I have most of my knowledge.
Mr. Solerno, thank you very much, and again, as I mentioned at the outset, thank you for applying. And these are the most difficult decisions, I think I speak for all of us, that we have to make up here, we make a lot of decisions, but these are very difficult decisions to make. So we'll finish the interview process here. We appreciate the fact that we may have, you know, hope lunch didn't get cold there, but we appreciate your willingness to interview by phone. So, thank you again, you're welcome to stay on the phone and listen, but I don't know how good that's gonna be here, but...
Okay, well, whatever your decision is, I'm honored that you considered me for this opportunity to assist with the growth of our city. And I'm sure you will make the right decision and select the right person.
Okay.
Or net persons, I understand there's two openings.
Yeah.
I thank you for considering me once again.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Solerno. Okay, alright.
Okay, thank you, Daniel, I'll call you back in a little bit.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Who's the next one?
Clint, Clint Hines. Well, if he's not here, we'll see if he shows up. Alright. Hi Gary, how you doing?
Pretty good, how are you?
Alright. Thanks for bearing with us, and on behalf of all of us, I think, I say on behalf of all of us, thank you for applying, thank you for doing what you can to try and make us a better place to live in here in Carson City. So, as I usually explain, we usually try to ask the same questions of each of the applicants, so nobody gets an unfair advantage. And then we'll give you a chance at the end, if there's something you want to add, feel free to do that. These are difficult decisions for us, so bear with us. So I usually start off by just asking you, one, to kinda tell us a little bit about who you are, and why you want to do this, and then the substantive question I have for you, that you could be thinking about, is, you know, what's your vision for Carson City, short term, near term, and long term? If you've gone, if you've had a chance to think about that.
Sure. First of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to the board. You know, I, first, for the record, my name's Gary Borst. And I've lived in Carson City pretty much my whole life, with the exception of going to UNR, I call Northern Nevada my home. I really think Carson City's, you know, best days are ahead. And I think how that ties in to Planning Commission is having that long-term vision, somebody that, you know, first of all, loves the area, and is gonna be here. One of the things that I can put my hat on is that when I say I'm gonna do something, I'm there, I show up. And I think that's 50% of the battle, and then the rest is having, knowing what you're talking about. So, what do I see Carson City's vision in? You know, I look at Carson City, and it has what appears to be a big, you know, the main employers are are gonna be service-related, and state, prison, those type of things. But I'd like to see, you know, different high-tech, maybe manufacturing jobs come into the area. I think that could certainly promote the area a little bit better. And also, I look at Carson City and its demographics, I'm a little worried about it. People, particularly right around my age, you know, you talk to them, and people that have grown up here, and they don't want to be, they don't want to live here. They think it's what you'd call a... It's a scary scenario, where opportunities are limited. And I think if you could turn that around, give people hope, that kind of thing, and I think starting out, smart land use, where like-minded businesses are placed to one another, makes sense for not only consumers, but also for businesses themselves. I look at the car business, the car dealers. At one point, they're very, they're separated. And consumers had to drive from one end of town to the next. And, you know, that was difficult. It all makes sense that they're by each other. And so, my vision, you know, I, that's a tough, that's a tough question. Putting that into words...
And there's no right or wrong answer.
Sure.
I'm more interested in kinda how you articulate that, and kinda what your general feelings are, so, that's good. Don't worry about it. No right or wrong answer.
You know, my vision is one of, that people want to come back here. A way to change the demographics of Carson City, I think is very important. Being a place that really promotes the recreational benefits of maybe even the history and the recreational side of Northern Nevada should be promoted. You know, we have great golf courses, skiing, that kind of thing. So bringing that type of tourism in, I believe is important, going into the near term. And long term, I'd like to see, you know, better jobs in the area, and land use policies that really make sense for businesses, and that aren't very... On a scale, I'd have to say I'm more towards the less restrictive when it comes to, you know, businesses opening a shop. I don't like to see a lot of what some people would call red tape, that inhibits growth. But at the same time, it has to, has to make sense for the community, and there has to be a long-term value to those businesses coming in.
Very good. It's all balance in the world.
Absolutely.
Alright, Jim, did I cut you off last time? So you want, you go this time, here, so...
On your application, I do want to ask you a question, which I didn't ask the other candidate, because it's not listed there. You are serving on a commission now, Shady Tree Council, term is up in 2016, are you gonna remain on there?
You know, from what I understand, I couldn't. I have one choice, or, I mean, I'm applying for this position. And if I were to get this position, there'd have to be somebody who steps up in the community and takes that spot, I feel like I'm better served. And this is something I care about more, and I think it affects the city more. The planning, the long-term solutions or non-solutions to the city are certainly important. I think my time and my service would be better, better used towards being on this Planning Commission as opposed to the Shady Tree Council.
Okay, my original, my question to ask the other candidate, because the better questions are coming. They got some great ones, and they stole every one of them.
Because some hard hitters, huh?
So, congratulations, they got some great questions. So, mine is just essentially, how will you look to improve or change the commission that you're gonna be serving on?
You know, I've only, I've been in one of the Planning Commissions, so as far as me sitting and saying I'm gonna change anything, I don't, I don't think I plan on changing how their dynamic, you know, I plan on being a person you can come to with common sense. First and foremost, I try to use common sense with every decision I make. And that's probably maybe my strongest asset, is just, you know, interpersonal skills, being able to talk to somebody, find out what their ideas and where they're coming from. And then acting in what I would consider Carson City's best interests as far as anything planning related. Did I, maybe I was off topic there? Okay.
Okay, Gary, thank you very much for applying for this position. Can you tell me why you want to be on the Planning Commission?
Sure. You know, I want to be on the Planning Commission because I'd like to see what, you know, how everything goes through as far as special use permits. I know back, you know, in the late 80s, early 90s, Carson City had a policy where kinda anything goes as far as, oh, you can build it, throw it up. And sometimes now, I see like, that they've gone to the other side. A little more, it's more restrictive, which has its benefits, but also it might scare people from putting something, you know, if they have a vision, and they want to put things in, a business. And, you know, maybe the building department has something very specific in mind for what might go there, or how the structure would be, would be set up. I want to be in this, this Planning Commission because I think I'm gonna bring some value to it in the form of common sense. And when people ask for a straightforward answer, I want to, I want to be able to provide it for them. So, that's, those are the long lines, thanks.
Hi Gary, I have a scenario for you. A builder submits a plan for a project that meets all city requirements. At the commission meeting, the Planning Commission meeting, many of the neighbors protest the project because they either don't like the use, or the project blocks their view. How would you make your decision, and what would your decision be?
That's a good question. Having heard the question, it meets all the city's requirements, but it's negatively impacting a neighbor, their view. And, you know, you'd have to take, it'd have to be on a case-by-case basis. You'd have to look, look at it on a map. You'd have to see, obviously, people want to have a view. If they paid for a view, they want to, they want to keep that. So I guess, I can't, I cannot tell you without, I mean, you gave me some specifics, but the scenario isn't, it's, it's, it's still not all there. Is there, would there be anything more to it, or?
No.
No. I would have, I'd have to know a lot more, Brad, than to answer that, sure.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Hi Gary, and thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Part of your duties on the Planning Commission are issuance or not of special use permits, variances, changes of land use, and master plan amendments. What in your background will help you make informed decisions? And secondly, how will you deal with contentious emotional issues?
So, going to the first question, how would I make decisions regarding changes to a master plan? You know, I'd have to say it would have to, you'd have to look at each, in each individual scenario, how it's gonna, how it will affect people, because it'll certainly affect their lives. But I would say that you have to, there has to be a common sense element to it. You know, Karen, can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure, sure.
Just so I can get my head around it.
Part of your duties on the Planning Commission is issuance or not of special use permits, variances, changes of land use, master plan amendments. So what in your background will help you make informed decisions? And then how will you deal with contentious emotional issues?
So, I would say, my background, I've had a little bit of background in special use permits. My family's applied for special use permits for different things. They certainly, they're needed and required to develop an area, especially if zoning, zoning has changed. But as far as land use, I think that might be the most important aspect going into the, to the future. Carson City has a lot of areas that aren't developed, the Schultz Ranch, the Lomp, Lomp area. Certainly, I think the Lomp area is gonna be a key area to develop in the near, near future, and how that goes about is gonna have long-term impact. Um, but, um, my background is, is common sense, plain talk, look at something on a case-by-case basis. Obviously, um, requirements that are put in by the city, those have to be met to, um, a certain degree. But, um, uh, one thing I, I, I wanted to mention is, is every once in a while, Carson City just really has a diverse makeup of, of residential properties. Um, and sometimes you have, um, odd properties within areas, like something that has a lot more land, something like that. I think those, those type of issues have to be addressed. You have to look at the parcel as opposed to what's currently on the books, um, and on how to, how to move forward with, uh, you know, some, something of that nature, a fence line or something, uh, that, that would need to be put in. Um, and, um, and, and also, um, how, um, going towards looking at businesses. Um, I remember not too long ago, there was a issue raised, um, I believe it was right off of, uh, North Carson Street, uh, Williams Street, uh, by the Nevada, Nevada Gun Exchange. There's a business that had this, uh, they got a special use permit for, uh, something that, that came out and intruded into somebody else's parking. Um, I looked at that one and I, it was a head-scratcher. Um, I forgot exactly the name of the business, but, um, it looked like the business needed to be in a different area, you know, and, and I couldn't, I couldn't understand why, um, that was put in. So, um, I don't, I, you know, I, I just plan on, on being, uh, forthright and using common sense with whatever's presented. And I promise to always act in Carson City's best interests.
And a lot of your issues are gonna be emotional. How will you, how, how will you deal with that?
Very calmly. Yeah. You know, I, I, I don't, um, I don't tend to get emotional with a lot of things. Um, I try to use, I, I just try to use my best judgment. And I understand there's very contentious issues. People get frustrated with rather the city or, uh, you know, there's, um, there's a lot of different personalities that play out on boards, that kinda thing. And, uh, you know, I just, I just gotta rely on, um, know who I am and know that, uh, being emotional, uh, sometimes clouds the judgment. So, um, and, and if other people are, are gonna be, uh, emotional, try to find a way to calm them down. Um, and, and, and look at it, um, whatever the issue is, tell them and reassure them that, uh, you know, that we're gonna, we're gonna do our best, best job. And, uh, we'll, we'll look at the situation for what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Is there anything that you wanna add in concluding remarks?
Um, you know, I think I wrote down one.
Take, take your time.
Sure. You know, I, in chapter five of Carson City's, um, master plan, um, document that I saw online, uh, it, it mentions, uh, public-private, um, partnerships. And I, I'm trying to think of, of a situation where, um, I was thinking maybe, maybe Jack might've been a public-private partnership. Um, but I, I can't think of a lot of winners that, that Carson City's done that are public-private, uh, partnerships. And I'd like to see more of that, uh, go on and, uh, kind of find a synergy between, uh, the public-private, uh, partnerships. And, um, but I was just wondering if, if, if there was certain agenda items that you've addressed in the past that have, have been winners.
Well, I think, you know, when, uh, we can have a long discussion, but I think, you know, uh, you know, in terms of public-private partnerships, I don't think you'd get an argument out of any of us up here that, you know, that public-private partnerships are important for development for a number of reasons. And I think that you mentioned Jack. Jack actually is a public-private partnership because, you know, it's a publicly-run system, but it's privately operated. And, and, you know, there's another public-private partnership ongoing right now with Third Street where there's, uh, redevelopment funds being put in there, plus the funds of, 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 uh, the, the adjoining landowner and also of, uh, one of the families in town here. So, that, that's kind of an indication of how those happen. But, uh, just, it, it's always wise to think, you know, if there's another way of, of building things or doing things where people are engaged, public-private partnerships seem to do the trick. So.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome to stick around and we appreciate you applying, Gary, and, and, uh, we appreciate your diligence on the Shady Tree Council. I noticed in your application that you said you hadn't missed a meeting, period, which is to be commended. So, welcome to sit and listen and then we'll make the hard decision here this afternoon. Thanks, Gary.
We'll see if Monica agrees.
Very good.
Hello?
Hi, Monica.
This is Monica.
Hi, this is Nick Morano, the city manager here.
Hello.
Hi, I've got you up on speaker. I'm gonna turn you over to Mayor Bob Kroll, who will lead the interview process. Are you ready?
I am.
Okay. Here's the mayor.
Okay.
Sounds like a game show.
Hi, Monica, how you doing? This is Bob.
I'm good. How are you guys doing? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Uh, one, let me say on behalf of all of us, thank you for applying and thank you for doing what you can to make, wanting to make the city a better place to live, work, and play. And we appreciate the fact that you've applied to, to do just that. Uh, we have, uh, several applicants today for two positions. Uh, we each ask a question. We generally try and ask the same questions or, you know, close, close to them. Uh, and then we'll make a decision later on. But, uh, these are the toughest decisions I think we have to make. So, again, thank you. And I, I usually start off the questioning by, by one, asking you, uh, and if you can hear me okay, tell, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you wanna do this. And, uh, the, the other substantive question I've had is, is what's your vision for Carson City in the short term, near term, and long term?
I'd like to purchase local food. I like to get on my bike and go right to the grocery store. Um, things like, that would be my long-term vision for Carson City. Short term would be getting some of these projects off the ground that I've been reading about and getting excited about.
Very good. Okay. Who wants to go next?
Hi, Monica, can you tell us why you want this position?
I can. I have been, um, looking to get involved one way or the other. And a lot of the stuff, um, that has come open, I'm not sure if was kinda what I was interested in. I kinda wanted to have a say in what happens in the city I hope to live in for the next forty-plus years. And I wanted to know how the best to do that. So when this position came open, I got really excited. I believe that I would bring a, a different viewpoint. Um, I'm very interested in preserving our history, 'cause Carson City really does have some really neat things about it that I'm not sure people know. And ensuring our future, ensuring that this town is a sustainable town that young families wanna come and live at and stay.
Thank you.
Who wants to go next?
So that's why I want the position. I really wanna be able to make sure that happens for Carson City.
Hi, Monica, this is Karen.
Hi, Karen.
And my question for you is, part of your duties on the planning commission are issuance or not of special use permits, variances, changes of land use, and master plan amendments. What in your background will help you make informed decisions? And how will you deal with contentious emotional issues?
Well, my background is mostly in the, of the medical field. I've been a nurse for thirteen years. I have traveled in terms of cities and building new things. This hospitals are like little cities. And so we, we deal with a lot of things I'm sure Carson City's deal with, um, in terms of my, I would have to do a lot of due diligence and research on projects. I would have a lot to learn from my fellow board members, 'cause this is a lot new to me. I've been doing some reading and stuff, but I'm by no means a builder or well-versed in zoning, so that's stuff I would have to learn. Um, but I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to put the effort in to learn about it and speak to the experts. Um, I've known what I've liked, you know, traveling, what I'd like to see in Carson. Um, in terms of, you know, there's always gonna be emotions when change is about. People in general, it's the human nature to not be too privy to change. And so it is our job to present things to the community, to, as open communication with the community. Knowledge is power. If you are not scared of something and you understand why it's happening, you're much less likely to become upset. Um, I've, in my professional experience in managing a unit of, you know, eighty nurses, people get upset about things. And it's our job to help people see why we're making changes and help them understand. And some people are never gonna be happy, but maybe they have a very valid argument that I need to hear and pay attention to, 'cause maybe they'll change my mind. Um, so I think it's just communication, open-ended questioning, and, you know, just kinda being able to deal with, deal with people and human emotions.
Thank you.
Monica, this is Brad Bunkowski.
Hello.
Hey, I have a scenario for you. A builder submits a project that meets all city requirements. At the planning commission meeting, many of the neighbors protest the project because it either blocks their view or they just don't like the use. What process would you use to make your decision on this issue? And what would your decision be?
Hmm. Well, my process would definitely be wanting to know what the use is gonna be for. You know, are they gonna build a strip club downtown? I don't wanna strip club downtown. Are they going to build a restaurant that's two stories too high? Maybe we can talk to the owners to maybe make it not as big. Um, a collaboration of sorts? And then listen to the community. Um, is this one or a group of small people because they live right next to it? Is it going, is this project going to better the future of Carson City in long-term? Do we have to make that sacrifice for the small neighborhood next to it because it'll be, uh, something we need in five or ten years? Or does majority rules? Is it not necessary? Is the use something we don't want? And then I would definitely err on the side with the community. Um, I think I'd have to hear both sides and I would have to know if the builder was willing to make some changes to appease the neighbors.
Thank you.
Hi, Monica, Jim Schurk. My question is, how will you look to improve or change the commission?
The commission? The, I'm sorry, I didn't get the last bit of that.
How will you look to improve or change the commission?
Oh, um, well, I don't know a whole lot about the members on the commission, so I don't wanna come in, uh, you know, guns a-blazing trying to change everything, 'cause I know that I have a lot to learn. So, um, I would just, you know, I would like to, to keep more community involvement, um, keep communication open. I know that sometimes it's hard for me as a com- community member to find out information about what's going on. I've gotten a little more well-versed at it, and I can definitely help spread the word of what's happening in Carson City. So I think, like with anything, there's, we all have busy lives, everyone's doing their own thing. The only thing I can think to maybe improve upon, because I'm, you know, it would be new, would be communication and that would be something that with the board members I would be working with, communication with each other, 'cause I would have so much to learn. And then communication with the community, ensuring that everyone is making true informed decisions and have their opinions based on what's really happening, not what they heard's happening at coffee last week.
Thank you.
Board, are we okay? Monica, uh, this is the mayor. Um, thank you for, uh, applying. Is there anything that you want to add that you think is relevant? You don't have to.
The mayor had asked you if there's anything you wish to add that you thought was relevant. Hello, Monica? You want me to try and get her back?
No, I think that's okay. Good, good.
She might've, that was it, but she might've hung up.
Okay.
Okay. One second, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Jesse.
Hi, good afternoon. Good afternoon, board.
Good afternoon.
For the record, Jesse Dammy.
Hi, Jesse. You've been through this, uh, before, I know. Uh, we just ask the same questions, uh, kinda sort of the long lines, same questions in order to not give anybody an unfair advantage. But, um, and then if you wanna add anything at the end, well, please do so. Um, but I think, to begin with, I think I wanna say on behalf of our entire board, thank you for applying. Thank you for your, your service right now on the CCVB. I know that, I guess, is expiring or whatever. Uh, but, um, and also, um, I can't help but, uh, but say, you know, I look at you and I kinda see your dad, so.
Thank you.
Let me just say, uh, let me start off by saying, you know, why, why do you wanna do this? You're already on the visitors bureau. You've been in there for a while. Why do you wanna be on the planning commission? And, uh, what's your vision for Carson City short term, near term, and me, and long term?
First question, you said why I like to be on this board. I think over the years, um, since I lived here almost twenty years, I have been more involved in development and planning of my projects in and around Carson. And due to that, I have opportunity to work with different jurisdictions in Nevada and presently in Wyoming. So, I've learned quite a bit how the process works, how land use, uh, is encouraged, and how we build the right business or a public institution at the right place. And I think I can contribute because I have been very involved in construction anywhere between forty thousand square feet project to hundred fifty thousand square feet project. And there is still a lot of room where we need a new set of eyes. And I've, I've seen through last year how the corridor project worked, how our thinking changed. And, you know, we, we still had some opposition, but at the end, we all came to an agreement to what works best for the city, what works best for the community. And I think I can contribute there from my experience and, uh, from what I do every day. Sorry, I have to still answer the short term and near term.
Medium term and long term.
Yeah, more long term. Well, if we look at the last twenty years, Carson City has come a long way. We have a lot of new retail development. We had a lot of hospitality development. But I think there's still things that I think we need more. We need a new high school. Nobody's even talking about it.
We did.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, you know, like some projects which will help a general public as a whole, because we do cater to visitors, uh, we ca- do cater to legislatures. But I think for the general population, low, middle class, you know, upper-middle class, those we still have, we need to improve our roads still. I think there's still an opportunity there. We don't have sidewalks on a lot of roads where we need to, that's my vision, to be a real capital. Just example, day before last night, I stayed in Solik City, is the capital. I walked from one block- a Holland Express in the last one year. And we have Omsby House that's still the same. You know, just, I think, few examples, I'm just giving you a few examples, that there are opportunities where we need to work with private-public partnership on development of public land and public places. At the same time, encourage new development in private where, you know, something new comes into town. We had a good demand on restaurants, like we got new... We got Olive Garden, we got Chili's, but I think we need some more of these so that when we get big, large groups being on CQB, we cannot cater to big, large groups right now. We don't have a convention center. We don't have a big, big restaurant that can hold 100 people at a time. So, things like that.
Okay. Thank you. Who wants to go next? Anybody?
Oh, yes. Laurie, go. Go.
Hi, Jesse. How are you? Good. I noticed you currently are serving on the Visitors Bureau. Are you going to be reapplying or you would not do that because you want to do the planning?
Actually, I already emailed Rachel my resignation for that position so that, you know, I comply with the one board membership.
The other questions that I had, so I'll pass.
Hi, Jesse.
Hi, Karen.
Part of your duties on the Planning Commission is issuance or not of special use permits, variances, change of land use, master plan amendments. What in your background will help you make those informed decisions? And how will you deal with the contentious emotional issues?
Well, from my background, I think when a business owner tries to invest, 90% of the time, even 100% of times, that person does his feasibility study homework of that particular spot or parcel where that person is bringing and building a business. So that person has done most of his due diligence in making sure because very likely a bank has financed his transaction. And thinking about emotional, I think being, if I'm elected today to the Planning Commission, I think thinking for the community and for the area around it. Does it fit into that particular spot? Does it improve the image of the city? Does it give us a, like a power or almost like a vision to look up? And does everybody around there are favorable? So all those things have to come into effect. Yes, we do get a lot of emotions. We got that emotion in four years on CQB. But I think at the last, you have to put the community first as long as everything is being done right. And, you know, I know 10 years ago, 20 years ago, we didn't care if a business will invest in sidewalks. We didn't care if they invest in landscaping. So see, how long we have come is that it actually adds value to our city when a new business... Like I go by Fandango and I look at the nice landscaping that Cord Yard did in front of them. Makes me feel happy. I wish everybody can do that. So new businesses can do it, and that's an opportunity. Just giving you an example, I'm building a hotel in Wyoming. It's just like a public-private partnership example. We're building a hotel and there's no access road to the hotel, so I had to make a driveway through another hotel's entry. So I'm like, okay, so somebody has a chance to either make a right to go to that hotel or make a weird left to go into mine. So I went to the Wyoming Business Council and said, let's apply for a grant to the state. I will contribute 10%. We built a service road where there's access to my property and there's access to other businesses that are on that service road. They agreed. They gave 500,000. I put in 52,000. We have a brand-new road. So if there's a need, businesses will help and they, when they're investing a million dollars or 2 millions, they will think, okay, this is going to add value. I think adding value, adding that pride for the city is very important.
Hi, Jesse. I have a scenario to run by you. A builder submits a project that meets all city requirements. At the planning commission meeting, many of the residents, or excuse me, many of the neighbors protest the project because it either blocks their view or they don't like the use. What process do you use to make a decision? And what is your decision?
So, everything as far as code is compliant is what you're telling me. So we have to do a little with some neighbors who don't like, okay. Well, first of all, I think, being a member on the Planning Commission, I like everybody to comment on the whole project first, to see what everybody thinks. Because at the... I think the most important thing for any project or a building is, is that unfavorable to the general public? There's always going to be opposition. And secondly, how does that impact those neighbors? Like if they have kids, young kids, and this business is not appropriate to them? Yes, I will object. But if it's just that it's blocking a view, maybe we have a compromise. Maybe the business will do something where we don't exactly put a big shadow. But also, we want to see how the person is putting a two-story building in a residential area to start with. Because if it's commercial, then we don't have any residents in the area. I know sometimes you do have residents in the back and it's temporary. But overall, if it's complying to the code and if it's adding value to the whole area and if it's revitalization where other businesses around will invest, I will be in favor of that business.
Jess, my question is, how will you look to improve or change the commission?
I think the folks that are already, you know, the planning commissioners that are already on the commission are maybe more experienced than me, so I do not have any vision of changing. But I think it is a team. If it's a seven-member board, if it's a five-member board, earlier I saw it was a three-member board when two of you had to sit here. It's all working as a team. And for a team is make... The most important part is making a consensual decision where we come to a point where it's what is best for the commission? What is best for our community? What is best for our city? And it will, it should always be done in a friendly manner rather than a confrontational manner. Because you can achieve very difficult things when you work in tandem. But when you work against each other, you can't get anything done. And that works at home, at business, commission, you know, it works at every environment. Is working as a team, communicating? Yeah, if you have an objection, if it's a valid objection, have a discussion on it rather than coming to a conclusion, okay? Rather than having a personal opinion, seeing what is a general opinion. And maybe sometimes I will have to change my personal opinion because the other opinion might be correct. So what, to achieve our long-term goals rather than the short-term, I think, will be my vision.
Thank you.
Board, are we okay with questions? Everybody? Jesse, you want to add anything to that?
Well, all I want to add is that I've worked a little bit in public service, being a member of the CQB. I enjoy it. And I think I learned a lot. And learning is a never-ending process. And I think here's an opportunity where you can bring two other new commissioners on where we look at the five, 10-year, 20-year picture so that our next generations have make Carson City their home rather than just go to school and move to some other place so that they feel pride when they live and they can tell, oh, I live in Carson City. That's my vision. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, you know that these are the difficult decisions we have to make, so probably the worst. You're welcome to sit around and listen as we go through this. Okay, Jesse, thanks. All right.
Mr. Mayor, the final applicant or final candidate will be Mr. William Deschler. He, his material is marked "late" material, and I'm going to go get him right now.
I don't think Mr. Hines ever...
Never showed up.
Clint ever show up? No? Okay. Did he get... He got notice, I assume?
They all did.
All right. Good afternoon. How are you?
Good. How are you?
BC, huh? That's a good initials.
It's easier to spell than Bill.
Yep, they're my initials, too, so I guess that says something, huh?
All right.
All right. Mr. Deschler, one, on behalf of all of us, thanks for applying. Thanks for wanting to be involved in your community. It's a big deal.
Thank you, folks, for doing the same.
Oh. And these are difficult decisions for us. Very difficult, probably the hardest we have to do. And so what we do is we try and ask kind of similar questions of each applicant so nobody gets a leg up. And then you're welcome to sit and listen to how we make our decision here. So, and I'm just going to start out by asking, tell us a little about yourself and then tell me what your vision is for Carson City in the short-term, medium-term, and long-term. What do you think?
I've been here about 20 years. I'm retired federal government. I was a landsperson, had a background in surveying, mapping, title transfer issues, lots of information like that. I'd like to see some of the federal lands, you know, in the area become, you know, lands that the city can use as far as, you know, some type of agreements with the feds on, you know, making use of some of these lands that we have around here besides, you know, growing pine trees and things like that on them. I'm, you know, I've been on, retired for, you know, a few years now, and I thought this would be a good opportunity to see if I could be of assistance to the community. I do work at a couple golf courses, you know, as temporary or part-time jobs. I enjoy doing that and pretty much that's it.
Very good. And your vision?
You know, like I said, I'd like to see, you know, some of the lands that are, you know, on the outskirts of the city within the properties of the city or Carson City itself become, you know, used as a, you know, as a useful property, you know, that people can enjoy. And, you know, I'm real happy with the, you know, with the Frisbee Golf Park that's going to go in. I think maybe more of those and so...
Okay. I didn't ask that question, so you give it to you.
There you go. Hi. Can you tell me why you want this position?
Again, I think it's something for me to assist with the other... I think I have the background in some of my, you know, dealings in the past of being able to make the lands that are surrounding Carson City valuable to the community.
Can you tell me how you will look to improve or change the commission?
You know, I'm, Jim, I'm not sure that I know what, you know, I haven't been to any planning committee meetings, so I'm a newbie at this. And I'd like to sit back and listen and see how, you know, I may be of assistance to the commission itself. You know, I've been to, I think, one planning meeting, this was quite a while ago, and it was presented at a, well, it was kind of a luncheon. And it was the planning commissioner itself was there, and he was explaining how the planning commission worked. And I think, you know, if I just sat back and listened and was able to figure out what was going on, that maybe I could be of assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying. Part of your duties on the Planning Commission is issuance or not of special use permits, variances, changes of land use, and master plan amendments. What in your background will help you make informed decisions? And how will you deal with contentious emotional issues?
As a lands and water specialist for the federal government, I was, my job was issuing permits and licenses and use authorizations for the federal lands, which included grazing and crossings and that type of work. And not everybody's going to be happy with your decisions, but you have to look at it for the best interest of the people that you're supporting and dealing with. I think that over the years, I've been able to do that. And you're not always going to make everybody happy, but you've got to deal with the people that are there. And the people that aren't happy, you know, you have to be able to explain your decisions.
BC, I have a scenario to run by you. A builder submits a project that meets all city requirements. At the planning commission meeting, many of the neighbors protest the project because it either blocks their view or they don't like the use. What process do you use to make your decision on this issue? And what is your decision?
I think that you have to get the whole scope of the project. And if, you have to weigh the points of the building, the builder, and the landowners in the area. It seems like that, I've been involved in this in my own situation when I was, you know, at a past residence where they built a, you know, the builder wanted to build a triplex across the street from my house. And we protested that, you know, it was a single-family residence, you know, in the whole area around there. And so we, you know, it finally came down to it that enough people, you know, were able to convince the planning commission that a triplex wouldn't work, but a duplex would work. So that's what we came up with. It's reasonable, I guess reasonable efforts in order to make the situation fair to the people. I think I would have to go out and see the site myself before I made any decisions on whether or not I would allow the project to start or not to start. I think I avoided that question pretty well, huh?
Pretty well. That's all right. So when you're in the federal government, did you deal with the Wild Horse and Burrows?
I saw quite a few of them, you know, they were grazing on some of our lands, but I, that wasn't part of my position. I did do grazing permits and leases for Bureau Reclamation, which is mostly foul and infernally and... a duplex would work, so that's what we came up with. It's reasonable, I guess reasonable efforts in order to, to make the situation fair to, to the people. I think I would have to, to go out and see the site myself before I made any decisions on, on whether or not I would allow the, the project to start, or not to start. I think I avoided that question pretty well, huh?
Pretty well. That's all right. So when you're in the federal government, did you deal with the Wild Horse and Burrows?
Uh, I, I saw quite a few of them, you know, they were grazing on some of our lands, but I, I, that wasn't part of my-
Okay.
-my position. I did do grazing permits and leases for Bureau of Reclamation, which is mostly foul and infernally, and, and the area around Lahotten.
Very good. Anything you want to add, B.C.?
I'm just hoping that, that if I am selected, that I, that I will make a difference in the, in the planning commission. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, B.C. You're welcome to listen as we make a decision here. And again, on behalf of all of us, thanks for applying.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, board, tough times. We have two positions, ones that have different expiration dates, and so one's ends in 2018, the other's in 2017. It's my thought that maybe we want to take the 2018 first, and then 2017. Does that meet with everybody's approval? Do it like that? And kind of just, you know, go start, and we'll see where we go, in terms of just put out your preferred name, or, you know, it's, it's difficult to say preferred name, but your selection for 2018, we'll see where that goes, and then we'll do 2017. Okay? Brad?
Yeah, I would support Daniel Salerno for the position expiring in June 2018.
I would second that.
Same for me.
That makes us irrelevant, Jim.
I'm used to it.
Wait a minute. You took my, took my statement there, man. Okay. All right. 2017.
I'd like to recommend Monica Green.
I'll go with Monica.
I like all of them, but I like Monica, too.
Okay, that makes you two irrelevant.
Yeah, you're irrelevant.
All right. We'll entertain a motion to appoint Daniel Salerno for an appointment that ends in 2018 to the planning commission. Who wants to do that? Go.
I move to appoint Daniel Salerno to the Carson City Planning Commission for a partial term that expires in June 2018.
Motion, second on the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Post nay, carried unanimously. Okay. We okay so far?
Yes, sir.
All right. Look, I kind of looked at the DA, and you looking at me with kind of an interesting look there, and I thought, did I step on something? Okay.
Not at all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. 2017. We'll entertain a motion to appoint Monica Green for a, a partial term ending, or, yeah, it is a partial term, ending 2017.
I'll make the motion.
Motion's in order, Jim, go.
I move to appoint Monica Green for a partial term that will expire June 2017.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay, carried unanimously. To everybody, thank you very much for applying. It's, uh, these are difficult decisions, but, and I know that there are others who have been on boards before, or on boards now. We want to thank you for your service to your community, and please don't be a stranger to our, to, to the boards and communities, so that goes to everybody. Thank you very much. All right, let's be in recess for a few minutes here, and then we'll take up the agenda again. We're gonna call a meeting of the board to revise back to order, and let me just say publicly here that during the break, I had a discussion with the city manager and the district attorney, and there's gonna be some discussions between the two offices regarding the district attorney looking at applications, not from a, from a policy, from, from a standpoint of whether or not they, the applicant, the applicant complies with the terms of the, the requirements of the position. Okay? So, and I, and I do want to put you guys on the spot, because there's a lot to, to consider on that little thing. But I think, you know, we, we kind of need some help, I think it's pretty clear today on, on how that happens, all right? All right. So let's take up the 24C, the strategic plan. Nick, are you gonna do this, city manager?
I am, Mr. Mayor. We're gonna present now the result of what has been about a six-month process. We started the planning process back last fall. We had a couple of staff-level workshops. We had a, we had a board retreat that we did last, this, this current year in January. We did a couple of public open houses. We've taken all that input, we fed it back into the planning process. If you look at the supporting materials, probably the, the best diagram is the, is the hierarchy, the triangle that is on-
Page four.
That's on page four. So as you go through the document, the mayor and I have put a cover letter. If you then go to page four, you'll see kind of the hierarchy, where we have the vision, the city vision, we have missions and values, strategic goals, strategic objectives, and again, to, to, to throw out what the strategic objectives are, we've got economic development, efficient government, organizational culture, quality of life, safety, and sustainable infrastructure. They're not in any, any type of priority sequence. So as you move down that hierarchical triangle, the next one you'll get to is citywide performance measures, and I've been working on that as well. I went to a meeting that was hosted by the International City Managers Association. They've got a great database of over 900 performance metrics that they have developed in coordination with literally hundreds of cities nationwide. I'm looking very closely at, at acquiring this database from them. To get their entire program is relatively inexpensive. We're talking about, from the low end, $800, and even at the higher end, to get the full package of support. It's an SAS database, it would be just over $15,000. So fairly reasonable, we'd be able to get access to proven performance metrics. That was one of the questions I had when I first got here with the performance metrics that we had, they were all kind of internally developed. These have been developed really nationwide, they've been vetted. So as we go down that triangle, what I would like to get to would be performance-based budgeting. I mean, that's the whole purpose of why we go through the strategic planning process. We want to be able to inform and make budgeting decisions. Performance metrics are gonna be an important part of that, and they'll enable you, they'll enable me to bring to you those type of budgeting decisions that are based directly on our strategic plan, viewing our performance metrics, the attainment of those metrics. As we move down the, the triangle here, you'll see we get into department plans and object, or goals and objectives, and then the department metrics. We also just revamped the, the unclassified performance evaluations. For my direct reports, your department directors, their performance objectives will directly feed into the bottom tier here, which is gonna be their, their department performance measures. So the public works director, in his performance evaluation, his objectives are gonna feed directly, obviously, into his department objectives. So the whole system kind of feeds together in terms of, you know, flowing down from our vision statement, which is the very top of that triangle. It's been vetted, we have taken it into consideration, we have in fact incorporated the public comments that we did get, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Question to the city manager?
Yeah, Nick, the program that you were mentioning that cost $15,000, is that part of this strategic plan that we've already paid for, or is that another, if we wanted that, is that something we'd have to allocate for?
Yeah, that's a good question, Supervisor Shirk. That would be in addition to what we currently, we've already paid for the strategic plan that we've done with Moss Adams. If we went with something like the ICMA performance metrics, to just get their database of, I think it's 945 performance metrics, that's under $1,000 bucks. If we wanted their whole program that would give us things like a dashboard, so you'd actually be able to see where we are near real-time attainment, it would help us to do like quarterly reports and things like that. It's very user-friendly. In the great scheme of things, yeah, $15,000 is a good deal of money for most people, but to pull something as complex as a SAS, an SAS database, with almost 1,000 metrics, that's a pretty reasonable cost, and it's by far the cheapest I've found. I'm not here right now to bring that to you, I'm just, I just want to give you a heads-up that I think the next step is to integrate citywide performance measures into it, and I think we need to strive towards performance-based budgeting. I think that's really the ultimate objective, and that's really why you go through the planning process, is to make those budgeting-type decisions.
It sounds intriguing, everything you said so far, but that's nothing that has come to the board. Isn't that your decision as city manager? Aren't you capable of saying, this is something that could benefit the city, and I'll make that decision?
I could, yes.
Thank you.
Nick, I'm all in favor of performance-based budgeting. This program, the database that you're talking about, do they provide you with a beta version so that you can look at it first and test-drive it? My concern is that we spent a lot of time and money coming up with our last set of performance metrics, which we're now potentially looking at abandoning, and I don't want to go through that process again. So how do you ensure that this database, these performance metrics, are the ones that are going to actually work for us and that we get value from?
That's a good question. We're going to sit through, I'm looking back at my HR director because I forget off the top of my head, when's the demo?
May 26.
May 26, and I can invite certainly two of you to take part in that. We're going to sit through a demo. Melanie has arranged it, we'll have the IT director, Michael Salaga, our business development director, and I will also be there. So I could certainly invite you, Supervisor Bonkowski, and one other. Obviously, I can't have a quorum of the board there if you would like, and I would certainly want, and I would absolutely welcome your input into it.
I appreciate that.
Well, I would recommend that rather than select one board member, that all board, we select it by either a random drawing of numbers or something, but to select one and then leave the other ones out, I think is unfair.
Yes, sir, and I defer to the board.
You can take me out of that mix. Put the other four and a half.
Four and a half.
I think all five.
No, no, four in a hat, in a hat, put them in a hat.
Yeah, all names go in the hat.
I have a half.
All names go in the hat, not four.
Okay, if you can give me a moment, and I'll confer with the DA, and we'll come up with a hat.
Whatever, okay. You know, Supervisor Brad made a good point, and you know, I've been a fan of performance-based budgeting since I've been mayor, and, you know, we've gone down the active strategies way, done a whole lot of decision points, a whole lot of metrics points, and what's happening to that system now? Are we letting that one go? Where are we on that? I mean, and I guess, you know, what I don't want to do is, I don't want to keep reinventing the metric wheel while we, to get performance-based budgeting in place. So where are we on active strategies? Is that gone? Not here?
Well, I mean, there are actually two different questions, Mr. Mayor. Active strategy is an application, I mean, you input the performance metrics into it. It's basically a database and a display tool. It's not very user-friendly, and it is extremely expensive. For those reasons, I did not renew our user agreement for active strategy. Now, we still have all those performance metrics, and I still have them all in Excel spreadsheets, and we can still monitor them, and we can still use that to do displays and quarterly updates and things like that. So active strategy, if you will, is just the database and the PowerPoint. The performance metrics are not an integral part of active strategy, and therein, in my assessment, is the problem because when we came up with those performance metrics, there was no standard. Departments were asked to come up with their own performance metrics, and some of them weren't asked to come up with any. IT and HR, for example, were not even included. Now, they're generally internally-focused departments, but they play major roles in the functioning of city government. So some of the departments, the sheriff's department comes to mind, the health department actually had pretty good performance metrics, I thought. Some of the other departments, not so good. I don't know what, I don't know what tracking a lot of those metrics told us. That's why I've been looking over the past almost year now for who else out there has databases of city or county performance metrics. I think the ICMA, from what I've, from my research, probably has a combination of the most comprehensive list of performance metrics that have been used, and if you will, validated nationwide, and they're inexpensive for us to get our hands on. And they also would give us the ability to do benchmarking, which is something I am very interested in being able to do. We are a little bit unique because we're a consolidated municipality, city-county, so we've got to find the right benchmark city or the right benchmark county out there, but being able to tap into a nationwide, to a database that was developed nationwide, will also give us the ability to do benchmarking. For example, if you look at how effective our recreation department is here in putting on our various recreation programs throughout the year, well, how are we doing? I mean, compared to what? You know, are we doing okay, or are we not? So that's where the benchmarking comes in. Being able to compare Carson City to whatever the benchmark city or county would be would give us a better idea for how well are we doing? Are we efficient, or can we do better at it? So that's what really drew me to the ICMA. We haven't thrown away our existing performance metrics. If we do go with something like the ICMA database, we do have the ability to also add in performance metrics that we think might not be covered in the database we get from them, or that are not covered sufficiently. If that answered your question.
I think so. So is it a $15,000 or one-time charge, or is it annual data fee?
The $15,000 would be upfront, and I have to find out what the annual license would be from that point on. But that would cover everything, that would give the ability for us to very easily do quarterly or monthly updates, display it in pie charts, in bar charts, in the scatter line chart. So it would give the average citizen the ability to look at data instead of getting a spreadsheet and getting numbers to get, you know, a full-color picture. And it's also user-friendly. That's what I wasn't crazy about active strategy, was that it, the amount of clerical time it took just to input the data and then to manipulate the data to do those quarterly updates was a great deal of time, and in the end, that's why I didn't think active strategy was worth it. We still have our metrics, though, we didn't do anything, we still have those in spreadsheets.
All right, all right. Well, I trust your judgment, Todd. Well, why don't we try, why don't we try this before you put your hand in there? We, who, I think there's Supervisor Bonkowski wants to be there, Supervisor Shirk would like to be on, I think. Do the other two want to be there, or do you want?
I don't know.
You want to have your name drawn, or not? Laurie, you want to be in it?
I would like to do it, but in the interest, if Mr. Shirk is truly interested in it.
Who's ever interested? I mean, if there's three interested, that's fine, we'll draw. Draw.
It's a fair way.
Doesn't matter. Hey.
Instead of drawing names, I'm more than happy to set up more than one demo, so that as many of you want to, you know, we can do two-on-two, so the first...
No, we're going to do one demo, draw.
Okay, but we will more than likely have more than one demo anyway, just because the department directors will be interested in seeing this presentation as well. We just want to get a feel of whether or not this is even a good product.
Very good.
Executive privilege.
Executive privilege, all right. We solved the problem, so.
Thank you.
All right, all right.
That's why she's HR director.
HR.
Compromise, like we talked about.
You know, I'm no compromiser, man. I say, you know, just tee it up, let's go. All right. Public comment on this document? I don't know, I don't see anybody here, anybody? No, let's bring it back to the board and see what the board wants to do on the 2016-2020 strategic plan. Motion's in order, we'll see where it goes.
I move to accept the 2016-2020 strategic plan as presented.
There's a motion, there's a second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay, carried unanimous, thank you. Go forth and put your hat away.
Put a hat on.
Put a hat on, whatever, put the umbrella out, okay. Request for bills and payments, we're now on 24D. Anybody have any questions with respect to that, that they want the city manager to weigh in on? I think this is, we need a motion now. If everybody's okay, Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to ratify the approval of bills and other requests for payments by the city manager for the period of April 7, 2015 through May 11, 2015.
Second.
Motion, second, is there a public comment on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay, carried unanimous. We're now on item 2425, concluding public comment. Any concluding public comment? Are we ready to adjourn? Unless there's an objection, we're adjourned.